All this meeting to order, I'll raise her to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the peaceful with liberty and justice for all.
With the agenda, we will be removing two items, 7B and 7F. Unless there's any other changes, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Can we add the...
Oh, the LCCMR.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a... It's under... Old business. Yep, so if we could please add LCCMR funding.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
On behalf of the city, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're just gonna pass, first before the open forum, consent agenda. The bills, purchase orders, investments, and there's gambling resolutions for St. Mary's. Can I get a motion to approve?
Some more. Second.
On behalf of the city, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so we'll have the open forum. I see we have some ladies here that want to do a little presentation. If you'd come up to the podium and please talk.
Hello, this is Mary Kristin Mary. And we've come a long way since we first read you our mission statement. We've been approved one grant of introducing ourselves and getting stuff together and commissioning artists and coming up with a sign. And we are in the process now of the second grant of actually putting the sign together. And our next question for the city is, will you take ownership of the sign? And second question is, will you budget monies to help maintain it? And that's our two questions.
Okay. Budget cycle is coming next month, right? And then we have to discuss it there, of course.
Okay.
So those things are under action items also, the two open forum?
Yes, those are under action items also. We normally do not make decisions or anything during an open forum, we just can't.
Right, we figure that, but we want to bring it up.
Bring it up.
Yes.
Yeah, and then also, can you tell us a little bit about the sign and stuff? You know, sort of part of this, part of it. Now, the sign here, is this... Where were you looking at doing this? Because is this by Arbig or are you looking over by...
The mill.
By the mill.
The mill, and he's okayed it and actually very happy about it.
He actually gave us a donation, a very considerable one, so...
He's a great man.
It would be on the elegant hill.
Yep, right on the hill there, okay.
And then we actually have Gary and his crew went out there and they located the length of it and kind of setbacks, that type of thing, just up there. So it is bigger than what we typically would see, but we can talk about that later.
Yeah. So yeah, I guess that part we'll bring up as... Feel free to talk, whatever else you would like to invite me. Like you said, we don't answer the questions in open forum, but more than willing to have you talk.
Right.
It's a substantial sign for the city, so we're hoping that the city will maintain it because we don't think we'll be able to as time goes on and years go by. So we've been, you know, we're talking probably sixty grand for the sign that will be donated to the city. Just something to keep in mind.
Yeah. Now, are you looking, is it a steel sign or is it a... Is it steel based? I don't know.
It looks like the brick and stuff would be that and then the inside of the sign would be like three dimensional letters on like an aluminum or some sort of maintenance free background. And that, some of them, things are probably to be determined a little bit based on what the county's looking into for right of ways and setbacks and that kind of thing. So that would be what everyone's asking for, but if something needs to change a little, but keep that look. And then I don't know if you guys want to talk about the back has some artists. So on the back of that, on the other side, there'd be some local artwork that could change.
Yes, and I seen that, I thought that was magnificent with, you know, some... That you had on the picture that I seen, yes.
We've... What, did we have eight?
Six.
Six artists that have submitted their renditions of what they think of strong, diverse, and connected, which actually we keep getting asked, how did the city come up with that? Those words.
That was way before my time and I'm probably the senior member here. If Gary might know, he'd probably be the one person that might know. That was back in the early 90s when they came up with the logo and that, if I remember right.
Well, most people we've asked do not realize Melrose has a logo. So I think this will be nice too, to put that out there. And to try to honor that as a city is our plan. And the connectiveness especially, and also of course the strong and the diverse. But we have our contests. We'll be showing the pictures different places in Melrose, hopefully displaying them here if that works out. And at the farmer's market, on Facebook, different places. And get the public's opinion as to what design they like. And then I think by August 29th, we decide?
By the end of August.
End of August, we'll decide on the design. Our next grant, we have to come up with 25% of the grant, of matching grant. So the price, I think we're looking at between 50 just for the sign, that's not paying the artist and maybe holding an event and a few other things. So we've raised some money, I mean, we've had some donations so far. And that along with the grant and keep getting donations and...
Good thing is we got the first grant, so everybody knows what we're doing and are very positive about it. So we think good chances we'll get the second grant and there's no limit to it. So it's not capped at anything.
And the beautification of the city is a great thing.
Right. And something for when people come to Melrose, they can take their picture by, share it, whatever. Coming down the Willbegon Trail, they'll see the artwork and... Yeah, we're excited and hope everyone else is and...
It'll also bring some business to certain genders in the city because we're going to be using local people also.
That's good.
Yep.
I'm glad you're here, thank you for coming in. You know how to get ahold of all of us too if you have any other questions.
Do you have any other questions or concerns?
No, I haven't had any issues and I seen that these benches are starting to show up and those are beautiful things to see, but I think the women of today have been doing a lot of work with that too. So it's nice to see organizations getting involved in our community, that's something that I really believe in.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. We're onto a presentation. The Melrose Public Schools just wants to give us some updates on the referendum that is happening next month. Maybe I'm gonna have to start bringing them into council meetings. Good day, Mr. Winter.
Good evening, thank you. Mayor Finkin, Melrose City Council members, City Administrator, Winter, I want to thank you for this opportunity. What you're... What I'm gonna walk you through is a part of a presentation that I've been doing as a community meetings throughout our district. This presentation usually lasted about 45 minutes. With discussion, it was an hour and 15, I can assure you it's not gonna last that long tonight. I've kind of annotated it down to really cover more of the fine points that were more applicable to this meeting. So I've got about 12 slides I'm gonna go through here and I will gain a little capacity as I go through with information because I'm gonna cover some things that are in future slides, just in terms of the visuals that are on the presentation. So please bear with me. And if you should have any questions at all during the course of this presentation, please let me know. First of all, real quickly, what got us to this situation today? We had put together a facility task force last summer that took a look at our facilities, took a look at surrounding school districts' facilities, did some strategic planning, and they made a recommendation to board on the scope of the project and the cost of the project. Following that, there was a survey throughout our community that took a look at the... Not only the capacity of the tax capacity of the district, but also the facilities that could have possibly been built. What happened during the course of that is that the survey and what the board felt that the community could support through a bond referendum, it was a little bit of out of alignment. The school board spent last winter, meeting with a number of working meetings, to try to reduce the scope of the project. And I'm gonna go through some of those reductions in the scope in knowing the process that we went through. The school board then set the date for the bond on August 9th, 2022. A construction management firm was brought on board. There was a number of meetings, a couple of meetings with the Melrose City Council, starting in April and May, which resulted in the Melrose City Council contributing a million dollars towards the project should the bond pass. I've spent the latter part of June going out and to all the communities doing the presentation. It was a wonderful experience to get out there and talk to people, hear some of their concerns. Concerns not only with the bond project, but some other concerns that are going on within public education today. We've had a couple of facility open houses the last couple of weeks and we've had some people that have attended the community meetings wanted to actually come in and see some of the things that we talked about. One of the questions that's asked is why a bond referendum? Speaking to another governance board of a public entity, I think a lot of you are well aware of some of the funding that comes from the state. As a school district, we do not receive the funding to do the scope of a project like this. We do have what are called long-term facility and maintenance dollars. These are dollars that were given to the district a number of years ago and it has really helped with the upkeep and maintaining our facilities. Right now, it amounts to about $535,000 a year. It's either pay as you go or you can go out and bond for something. And when I came in 2017, the district had gone out for a bond to do a major upgrade in HVAC at our Community Services Building and also within our district. So that leaves us about $235,000, $240,000 a year just to do some general maintenance things within our district. And general maintenance things, especially with LTFM dollars, you can only replace like for like. So we've been spending this money replacing windows, replacing carpeting. If we have a boiler go out, we can replace a boiler, but it doesn't allow you to add any additions or anything on to your building. So this is why school districts have the mechanism of going out for a bond referendum to update, replace, and build new facilities. So just to give you an idea of the overall scope of the project, it's basically in two areas. And I figured out a long time ago, a laser pointer does not work on the TV, so... You see one scope of the project right here, which is the CTE area. The CTE area stands for Career and Technical Education. And the other scope of the project are the gym facilities and the pool facility. First of all, focusing on the CTE area, the major addition to the CTE area will be the auto shop right here. Currently, the auto shop is located across the parking lot in a garage. A garage that does not have running water, it does not have an environmentally controlled environment. And it's an okay facility, but it just doesn't have room for the growth in our CTE areas. The scope of the project would also allow for updates within our metals and wood project, within our metals and wood areas. Currently, our ag programs right here, this would move to that area. Art would also be renovated, along with the auto shop area. A flexible classroom for CTE would be put here. And the DCD program, which is currently housed right here, would move into that area. DCD stands for Developmentally Cognitive Delayed Students. This is our program for our students that have physical and cognitive development issues. The reason why we are gonna move that program from here to here is that throughout this hallway, there is no restroom, there's no handicap restroom. Students that currently have physical handicaps that are in this area, whether it's wheelchairs, lockers, have to be wheeled all the way down the hallway, all the way down here to a handicap accessible restroom that's built in this area. That's not fair to those students. The reason why we're moving here, even though there's no restroom anywhere in this area, there is a faculty toilet that exists right here that is near an office that we'll be able to convert that to a handicap accessible bathroom with lifts and those type of things for those students. The other ADA accessible components of this project, currently right now, to get into the metals and the wood shops as the students come down the hallway, there are stairs to enter both these areas. Any students currently that have physical handicaps that involve wheeling or use of a wheelchair have to be wheeled outside and entered through outside doors to these areas. Part of the scope of this project was to put an interior hallway between these areas with a ramp so those students, those handicap students will be able to enter into those areas. And we do have a few students that do take those classes and certainly we don't like wheeling outside when it's 20 below outside to get them through an exterior door. The other part of the scope of the project is the pool is currently right here, locker rooms, the old 1969 gym. The major function of this part of the project was to build a new eight lane pool in this area to replace the existing six lane pool. Part of the scope of the working meetings last June was to possibly look at renovating that pool. And after having pool experts, architects, engineers, yeah, it was probably possible, but the money that you were gonna spend on it probably exceeded the amount of... Not exceeded the amount, but exceeded the amount of really realistically building a new pool. And if you did renovate this pool, part of the issue with this pool, small decking, small spectator space. Also, it has a one diving area in the pool that currently is out of regulation for depth for diving. So there was talk about, well, maybe we can dig it down, we can do this. And boy, now you're dealing with footings from 1969 and the reality is, once you do all that, you still have an area that was as a small deck area and only a capacity of 175 seating in the pool area. And if you've ever been to a swim meet, those swim meets get very crowded, there's not enough room to sit out there. And to talk about ADA accessibility again, any spectators that come in are in wheelchairs, they're wheeled in and they sit right there in the deck of the pool. And there are students moving around, you can't see anything, they're getting wet. And once again, that's another very good experience for our handicap spectators. So the pool would move into this area. One of the scope of the projects that was taken a look at and was a major financial consideration to bring the project down was initially there was plans to build new locker rooms in this area to bring down the scope of the project. The decision was made to renovate the current locker rooms, the lower part of locker rooms, which are the girls locker room, upper part, which are the boys locker room. And to do that, once again, you have to make it handicap accessible. An elevator would be put in this area to go up, down to the girls locker room, up to the boys locker room. And also, this would be accessible to the mezzanine spectator space in the pool. The old pool would be turned into a multi-purpose room with a wood floor. We would keep the spectator space in place just in case we'd have some smaller activity events in there. But part of the other thing that we heard from many people within the community is this gym, the original gym built in 1969. If you've ever played on that gym competitively, it currently has a polyurethane over concrete floor. Our main performance gyms over here, they all have wood floors. And once again, I've never played competitively basketball, but I played basketball, I played volleyball. These type of wood floors, they absorb anywhere from 35 to 40% of the impact in case you fall and it's obviously much easier on your knees, especially as you get older. So this main, this 1969 gym, also wood floor would be put into that area. The nice thing is you take a look at this area, and this is working with the Melrose City Council and talking to the community members, one of the things we heard loud and clear was, we want more access to this area. This is a very vibrant town, you know, especially in the wintertime, people want to get out and do things. We wanted to have the ability so that people, not only just on weekends or after school, but possibly during the course of the day, could come in and use these facilities. And this is a good area that we could secure off, so anybody coming into this building, we would have locked doors and supervision so that those people couldn't get into those areas. Unfortunately, this past spring, school security became a huge issue again, as it does invariably every once in a while. We want to make sure that we let the parents, the community know that if we would do something like this, it would be very secure with locked doors. We already have a very secured building with two secured entries during the course of the day. We have a camera system throughout the building, but these areas would be locked up so people using those areas during the day would not be able to enter those areas. We have the... In building this, we would have the facilities and we have already within our building, we have a lot of students that are lifeguards, that we could have lifeguards in the pool during the course of the day. It's just a matter of working with our current community head staff, our principals to make sure that we can open up some of those areas. And we've already put together a framework by which we think we can do that. Any quick questions on that? This information is also available on a screencast on our website. It includes all this information, some other things that I took out that were more pertinent to some of the community questions that we answered. This is on our website also. This overall gives you the scope of the project, how much the project's cost, with the total commitment of $29,940,000. Now, one of the things that, after doing a number of community meetings, we've had a lot of questions on for the pool addition, $12,976,000, but that's a lot of money for a pool. As a municipality, you guys are very well aware of the regulations that come down from the state and the federal government. The current regulation that's in place that should you do any type of significant addition on to your building, one of the things you have to do is you have to build a storm shelter. And I think the probably the most visible aspect of that in the community, if you look at our two mobile home parks within the last few years, they had to put a storm shelter in. Because of the weather that we have, the tornadoes that we have, you have to put those type of safety measures in there. This whole area would become a storm shelter and that adds about $2.5 million plus to the project. That area would be built as a storm shelter so that everybody in the building would be able to enter into this area. You have to have enough room, five square feet per person, which is basically a two and a half by two and a half foot square. You're pretty tight in there. But that building would be built with standing up F5 tornado. For those in here that went to school and you had the tornado warnings where you went in the hallways and you knelt down and we all felt you were gonna be safe from tornadoes, that wasn't gonna happen. We saw just recently within the last few years, Wadena High School. That building was hit by an F5 tornado, obliterated the building. Thankfully, nobody was in the building. They had to rebuild a whole brand new high school. Difference between this bond and the 2016 bond, I think the board really did a lot more focus on the balance between educational and activity space. The CTE, I don't think we've ever heard an argument out there ever that this is needed. The idea of allowing more opportunities for students, and we'll talk about some of those classes in a second, in our CTE area, career and technical education area. One of the things that was not around in the last bond referendum was the ag tax credit that was passed by the state in 2017. There was a lot of discussion on that, would it or would it not get passed? And I think that hurt the bond referendum at that time. Since then, that ag tax has been passed. It started out as a 40% state coverage of the increase per acre of land for agriculture. And by the time that this bond would pass and this would go into tax rolls, the state would cover 70% of the increase per acre of a school bond referendum. We heard from our community meetings, we know how much these bond referendums impact our agricultural neighbors and friends that are out there. But I think the state of Minnesota has stepped up, they will pay 70% of the increase. That wasn't around in 2016. We still do recognize that it is a significant amount of money for our farmers. One of the things to also realize with this is that this is the state of Minnesota that's paying the 70%? Who is the state of Minnesota? Everybody in this room. Currently, right now, anybody in here that pays any type of property tax, you're paying for other schools' projects that either have been built or will be built since 2017. Stock Center, they passed the referendum last fall. They're currently, they've sold the bonds, they're building. If you're going in here, your taxes are contributing towards their project. Albany, same situation, they already passed one a few years ago and if they pass theirs that are coming up also on August 9th, we all chip into that. We are the state of Minnesota. One of the things we also have done throughout this, as I talk about this project, has been developed more with a community focus and partnership. We want to make this building accessible to our communities. We want to make this building accessible more to our parents and families and you saw that within the scope of the project. Just to give you an example of some of those CTE areas, here are some examples of it. As you can see, a number of examples on there are different CTE programs. As a district, we do a very good job already on college in the schools courses, CIS courses, and we currently offer 27 different college in the schools courses where students within our system can get actual college credits, graduate from a higher school with essentially almost two years of college under their belt if they are successful. That's something that this district has worked on and it's not that we haven't worked on these. We've got three very good teachers in these programs and we've got a number of great programs that we currently offer. These are all the CTU courses that we currently have the opportunity to offer. They're not all offered every year, some of them are offered every other year, some of them every third year, but these are a lot of good courses that we offer with our three teachers, not only our CTE teachers in metals, woods, and ag, but also CTE teachers in art, fax classes, those type of things. I can tell you this right now as a superintendent who's been doing it for five years in this district and has done it for seven years in other districts, and also having been a high school principal for a number of years, everybody in here knows there's a shortage of teachers. Just the way it is, the biggest shortage in teachers are the teachers that teach these courses. And these are courses we know that as a society, as a community, as a state, we need these students with these type of experiences in electrical, in construction, in auto tech, you name it. We've got three teachers right now. Every district around us is updating and building new facilities for these areas. That means our teachers get recruited to go to those programs. And we dealt with it this spring. One of our teachers, heavily recruited by a superintendent that I know. I get the old godfather saying, nothing personal, it's just business. And those are easy recruitments. And we are fortunate that those teachers stay here, they like our school system, they like our students, but they are seeing the facilities that are being built around us. So we include a multi-purpose area, as I talked about. There were a number of cost reductions within the scope of this project. Renovate the old locker rooms, take the spectator space down a little bit from the facility task force recommended 500, we took it from 500 to 300. 300 is still significantly more than 175 that are currently, that we currently have. And as we talked about, we're gonna keep all these spaces safe. This is not an actual rendition, but I know there are many people in this room that are familiar with that sport, that's pickleball. That multi-purpose room would be lined for pickleball. We could put portable baskets in there for basketball. We could have some fitness equipment in there so that community members could come in and use it during the course of the day. One of the big questions that came out, well, to use that, how much would it cost? Every school that we took a look at, when you do something like this, whether it's a fitness center or a pool, those type of things, everybody charges a nominal fee for it, anywhere from $3 to $5. Because as a school district, we gotta make sure that we can maintain our budget and any additional class that would go into this project to staff and supervise these areas that would be paid for by those people that are actually using those facilities. Just to give you an idea, and this exists on our website. Well, currently, where do we stand in the area for estimated, or excuse me, for taxable, excuse me, taxes payable on residential property? So these are just taxes on the rolls to pay for school... So these are just taxes on the rolls to pay for school bonds and school levies. We're currently right here, and you see Long Prairie, Gradyville, Pageville, Albany, Holdingford, Swanville, BBE, Uppsala, and SOC Center. I know there's a lot of people that like that, but when you compare us to the area, what opportunities are our students not getting if we don't have funding for a lot of those programs and facilities? Should that bond referendum pass in August 9th, we would move from here to this yellow bar here. I'm not going to sit here and speak about other districts. SOC Center did pass a significant bond referendum, and their school board passed a huge bond levy for HVAC updates and those type of things. That's why they're so high. So we would move from the bottom to about the middle. Cost per acre of ag land for a school, bonds and levies in operation, once again, we're right down here at $1.70 per acre, and this is once again just for school bonds, funding and levies. All the same communities, pretty much the same order, SOC Center here. That would move us from here to here slightly below the middle of that. So as a school district, we're not asking to be number one in terms of amount of taxes to be paid for bond or school levy facilities. I would also direct you to our website, isd740.org. There's a lot of information on there, the bond referendum, there's a tax calculator on there. One of the things we want to make very clear is we're doing these community meetings, that our financial consultant, Ailers, if you are a person that owns ag land, to contact them directly to see if the tax impact will be on your land. It is very complicated, it's not a matter of going to a chart that you'll see on there. For example, if you look on our residential tax chart, you'll see that if we use $175,000 home for being an average home, that's about an increase of $224 a year. And one of the things that I want to make very clear here, as I've made in all the meetings, if the bond should pass and someone that owns $175,000 house looks at their taxes, they're going to say, wow, this is a lot more than $224. That's the increase. That's not the total amount you're paying taxes. But a lot of times, people look at their taxes, and I was told my taxes were going to be $224. That's the increase of taxes that you already pay. We also sent a brochure out to our whole district, and those that didn't get them, we've been handing them out. I make sure even if people didn't get them, they call me, I'll hand-deliver them right to the door, anywhere. We also have a document on our website, Frequently Asked Questions. We also have a Facebook site and social media that we send out information every week. I do have a message that goes on our website every Monday, the Star Post, I've had printed articles in there, information's out. The only thing I would say is kind of be careful about some of the other social media sites. I get a lot of questions of things that people are seeing on other social media sites. It's a great opportunity for me not only to have a discussion with those people, but also just to give them some of the correct information that's out there. We are also very fortunate in the city of Melrose that there's early voting starting on August 2nd. One of the things you'll also see on our website is where to vote, as we're well aware of, once again, as being a government entity, there are many of our surrounding communities that no longer have polling places, so they have mail-in ballots. So those communities, they can either do a mail-in ballot, or if you live within Stearns County, you can come right to this building and start voting on August 2nd, all the way up to August 8th. However, I've warned all those community people, if you are outside, live outside the city of Melrose and you wait till August 9th and you come here, you will not be able to vote here. August 9th is only for those residents that live in Melrose. And if you want to put in an absentee ballot during a regular school election, you could do that at the district office. For this, you will not be able to do that because it's a primary, you would have to go to Stearns County West in order to do that. So we want to make sure that was the biggest thing that we got on our website right away is the polling place, so nobody was confused how to vote, where to vote, and when to vote. With that, I'll open it up for any questions. Like I said, I wanted to make it a very quick presentation. I hope that some of you have already heard this information, but also give you an opportunity to clarify anything.
Travis, do you have any questions?
I've got one quick question. Everybody's aware of the inflationary environment we're in right now. I know the number of 29 million was probably given to you maybe a year ago or so, based on design. By the time we get to, let's say passes, and you get to building the building, how do we account for the inflation effect? Because now you're over budget possibly, and the referendums for 29 million.
So it's a really good question. When the scope of the project was put together by architects, there was an inflation factor put into there. Part of the other reason is why we bring on a construction management firm, is that they are able to work with the contractors, they're able to work with the suppliers to get the best prices to keep those prices down, and they are very confident in the numbers that they have. Also, working with Kraus Anderson, they're also very confident that they could keep this under the current environment. Now, once again, we're talking about the current environment. This whole process takes about an 18-month-long duration. And who could have guessed 18 months ago what would be going on right now? And in the same way, who can guess what's going to be happening next spring? I taught economics for 10 years. That doesn't give me any advantage over anybody in here to predict what's going to happen next spring. If I could predict what the economy's going to be like next spring, I wouldn't be standing here right now. But there is an inflation factor that's built into it, but you're absolutely right. We're a little concerned. We know that inflation jumped up a little bit more than at least I anticipated, but between the architects building that inflation factor in, and Kraus Anderson, a very noted construction management firm, they're very well-known for bringing projects in, at least at the level of which was anticipated at times under that budget. I wish I knew what was going to happen next spring when it goes off of bond. I can speculate, as a person who's studied this, I won't care to speculate at a public meeting, though. I don't want anybody to start selling things off in their portfolio based upon my recommendations. Other questions?
Anybody out in the crowd have questions? All right. Yeah, no, I'm glad you're here, especially with some of the media posts out there. I encouraged Mr. Winter to be here, just some of the stuff that I've been seeing in papers, and I just felt it'd be good to get somebody here to bring out the facts. So I appreciate it. And I think people should know that this whole project where the city was involved, I mean, this is something that I guess that I've been sort of visiting with before either superintendent or the administrator were in Melrose. This was something that I thought was, I had passion on even after 2016. So I know, I sort of visited through the years because I've always wondered, what do we do with the essential care money? And so I think a lot of blame can be thrown my way about bringing this forward. But it brings me back to 2008, when we were looking at building a fire station. That was one of the most rottenest times to build a building back then with the crash of our economy. But by building the fire station that year, we saved over $300,000, just because all the bids came in, because so many plumbers were, you know, had no work, so a lot of the bids came in very cheap back then. And which brings me back to even today. When you look at the way everything's going, I mean, 2016, that was like $30-some million, and we're doing half the project, and now it's 29 million. And in my own opinion, I'd say in another three years, you're looking at that this project alone would be over $50 million, and for me, I just think it's, they finally cut the fat off, and I just let people know. That's why I believe in this project, I think it's good for everyone. But yeah, everybody has their things. I totally know it's hard for everybody. I don't like my taxes going up, and I don't know if my kids will benefit from this, but I hope future children do. I want us to be, keep bringing up bright and smart children from our community. So there, that's where we're at. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Finkins, and city council members and administrator, Ms. Winter.
All right. It is 6:39. We are on to a public hearing, a public hearing to abate nuisance to Melo City Code Section
Good evening. We warned you last time that this would be coming. Every spring, Chief Mouse does a sweep through the community and identifies properties that have nuisance conditions on them. Those properties, then the owners are sent a letter describing the problem and directing them to, you know, correct the issues there, and they're given 10 days to do that. I spoke with Chief Mouse, I was curious, how many letters did he send out after that initial sweep? And he said that they issued 77 letters this year. After that first inspection and the 10 days lapse, the properties are re-inspected. If they still have problems, they're issued another letter, and they're given another five days to get the issues corrected. Again, then they come back, goes back and does a final inspection. If there's still a problem, that's when it gets directed to me, and at that point, we schedule this hearing. And, you know, the hearing gets scheduled, all the property owners get a written notice given to them, and we have affidavits of service that they all receive notice of tonight's hearing. We also post the notice here at City Hall, and we've got an affidavit of posting. And then the purpose of tonight's hearing is to present what has been found to the council, and then we ask you to, you know, make the determination as to whether the nuisance conditions exist, you know, as stated, and if so, to have the council then issue an order, you know, directing that the nuisance conditions, you know, be corrected. Part of that order then, you know, if the nuisance conditions are not corrected in response to your order, that's when we then go to court and ask the court for an order that authorizes the city to just go on to the property, abate those conditions, and then assess the cost of abatement to the owner. To illustrate, I understand the council's gotten copies of Chief Mouse's reports. With the, and he takes photos, you know, when he goes out and inspects. You know, last inspection was towards the end of May, early June, so for tonight's hearing, we asked that, you know, fresh photos be taken to show the condition of the properties this evening. I have Officer Mormon here who took the pictures and can describe, you know, what the conditions are on these properties.
Our 32 Rose Park, here in after here for DUB, Craig is not here tonight, so I kind of got thrown into this.
If you could go closer to the mics so everybody can hear you.
These photos were obviously from May, so I went there this morning, and it looks like Craig took a bunch of pictures. I took these pictures this morning, basically everything that was in the photos that I looked at prior to going there, everything's still there. The car, you can obviously see, has the red stickers, 2021 tab on it, and then there's just some debris, old windows and a fence leaned up against the tree there. 48 Rose Park, I believe, was just a bunch of debris around the property. It looks like they made an attempt to clean up some of it. There is still plenty of stuff, as you can see, laying around, a bunch of garbage and just other miscellaneous things. However, the vehicle in question had been removed. So this is what it kind of looks like today. 101 Rose Park is just a vehicle, so this vehicle's been parked there for I don't even know how long. Obviously, it's got the red 2021 sticker, still parked there today in the same spot. 519 First Street Southeast, I believe, pertaining to the truck and the camper. I'm not sure who lives there anymore. I was just talking to Scott about this before we started this. It was an older gentleman, and he had been taking care of this stuff a couple, like last year probably, and now it looks like his truck and his camper have just been sitting there with these fire caps. And those are the pictures that I took today. 204 Second Street Southwest, again, was just more debris and garbage laying around the property. These are obviously the photos that Craig took early in the spring here. These are some of the photos that I took today. Some of the property was cleaned up around the yard, around the house. There is still plenty of miscellaneous stuff laying around, like that trailer's got couches, garbage, stuff from inside the house, and then there's stuff shoved in between the camper. And I don't think Craig had the camper on there, the license is on the other side, so I'm not sure how long that thing had been sitting there either. Did I leave that summed up all five of them?
Good news is we're down to five, so properties outstanding. We had two more that came into compliance before tonight's meetings, which gives us about a, just over a 90% compliance rate. So I think these, the work that Chief Mouse is doing is effective. If there's anybody, any of the property owners or the public that would want to speak to their situation and to the council, now would be the time. If the council has any questions, we'll try to answer them. Otherwise, later on in the action items, we'll be asked to review these and approve them.
Yeah, I got a question. Now, if we go ahead and approve these, it looks like some people have been making efforts to become compliant or whatever. They still have, after this notification, they want to have 30 days or something for give or take?
Yeah, we, you know, we're stepping into kind of making sure that we're complying with the state requirements, so that, you know, we can end up, you know, with the order from the court and the ability to assess. So we would give them another 30 days, and they would get served with your order, the same as they were served with, you know, the prior documents. And after 30 days, go back and check, and if they haven't, anybody that's still out of compliance, we will file with the court.
And then they have to the day they go to court to clean it up, even that yet, right?
Yeah. And that has happened. I have gotten calls, you know, the day, you know, asking, what can we do to get this taken care of?
No, I just know that we've had that, where they want an extension on the day of court, and it's like, no. All right.
My usual answer to them if they call in is that, well, you've got to clean up your property to Chief Mouse's satisfaction. If he calls me and tells you you've complied, then we'll dismiss it, and you don't have to go to court. Otherwise, we'll see you in St. Cloud.
It is 6:48. Is there anybody out in the public that would like to speak? All right, it's 6:49, we'll close this meeting. All right, on to reports. It's Police Department Monthly Report.
Here to give you the quick rundown of June 2022. A total of 21 citations were issued for the month of June, verbal warning, 62. For the month of June, we received 301 calls for service. At this time last year, June 2021, we were at 281. At the end of June 2021, we ended with ICR 1926, and at the end of June 2022, we're at 1722.
we're at seventeen twenty-two. And agency assist calls for the month were at thirty-five.
All right, anybody have any questions? Thank you. Uh, Scott?
So, most of my time is dealing with nuisances for the city. Uh, you can see in my report that, you know, the time spent preparing, you know, for tonight's hearing. More disappointing news from the Bonner matter. Uh, we had the trial scheduled for June twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And as my report notices, I got contacted by the court on June twenty-seventh. And was advised that we were being, we would have to be rescheduled, that there was a matter of higher priority that had to come in. And so, you know, basically, they're like the airlines, they were overbooked and we got bumped. Case that the court considered the higher priority. And there's not much I can do about it. The, uh, trial is now scheduled for August twenty-sixth, so we should, will have another council meeting before this gets resolved. The good news is that in talking with Bonner's attorney on, you know, rescheduling and what would work and when, uh, he finally did kind of say that, well, yeah, we probably don't need two days, we just need one day. So, a, a small step in the right direction on that matter. I wished I had better news, but, you know, it's the second time we've been ready to go and gotten a call the day before and told that it's not gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you. City Engineer Report.
All right, good evening, everybody. Finally something to talk to you guys about here, a little specifics that I can instead of pointing to a short report. So, I met as a staff this week for a couple hours to talk about all the apartment, all the departments in one room, talk about potential projects, how we can make sure everybody's being handled and shared together here. This is the tentative list that we're looking at for twenty-twenty-two, or twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. Twenty-twenty-five is a little bit of a mystery yet, that'll be in the future. Uh, but these are the ones we're working through. Uh, we have some soil borings ordered, that'll be happening in the next couple of weeks here, that'll allow us to get an estimate for you guys. And with that, we'll come to you guys with a recommendation for a final project for twenty-twenty-three to put in your budget, and then some future budgeting for twenty-four and twenty-five as well. So, again, these are the things we're looking at. Now, you can see Mustang Lane, Seventh Street Northeast, those are pavement condition problems. Uh, First Street Southeast, likewise a pavement condition problem. And Fourth Street Southeast, a really things that Gary has been watching for a long time. Gary really keeps on top of this stuff, so he knows where the bad stuff is in town. It makes my life real easy, I walk with him, we talk about him and see what it's gonna take to fix it, so. Otherwise, like I said, look for more information next month from, from us, with some numbers looking forward, and then we'll see what, what shakes out in the end by the time we get done budgeting. Questions for me?
In that Eighth Avenue, that's, that's the street, not behind the businesses, right?
That's correct. Yes. Absolutely.
All right. City Administrator Report.
So, obviously, we're continuing on the wastewater treatment plant construction project. If you've looked that way, the headworks building actually is up. So, you can see it if you're driving. It's the large structure that you can see out at the wastewater plant. We still are on track to get this done in the early part of twenty-three. The RDB project, if you've been paying attention over the last week, we have been slowly drawing down that dam, and it looked like it almost stopped. I haven't seen it last couple hours, Gary, I don't know, has it, is it still flowing slightly?
Well, three inches forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, so that was a very slow drawdown, so that repairs and cons, and inspections can be completed. And then once those are done, obviously, it'll slowly come back up when the projects, that part of the project's finished. So, um, both those projects are actually on, I wouldn't say, I'd say the RDB project actually is probably a little bit more on schedule. I think the wastewater plant, we've talked about the fact that it might take a couple months longer than what they had originally anticipated. But, um, the RDB project, I think we're in pretty good shape on that one. And my understanding is starting tomorrow, they're gonna be doing the approaches for the bridge, so. Over the next month, you're actually gonna see a significant amount of activity out in that area. The City Public Utilities has been keeping the public informed about the electric grid and what is happening as it relates to potential curbing of electricity for the summer. Just so everyone knows, this is a very large issue that is affecting transmission around the country. So, fortunately for us, um, we are being very proactive with our residents and trying to keep them abreast as to what's going on. I do want to note that if we are gonna be doing any growth in the city, which is the next thing I will be talking about, we have more than enough capacity to accommodate our growth that we would have. This is really, again, it goes back to transmission. So it affects, it affects the grid that we're part of, it doesn't affect our own utilities. What is affecting our utilities, just like it is affecting all of our departments, is, um, we're just getting delayed in terms of getting products. So, that's one of the things we're wrestling with, and then the cost of that product is significantly, significantly going up. And so, um, as David indicated, we're in the process of doing all of our, all of our projects right now in terms of budgeting and looking at that. And that is the one thing that I am gonna request of the council. Normally, you would have a budget meeting right before the regular council meeting on August eighteenth. Due to some uncertainties in terms of, um, timing, materials, that type of thing, it's gonna take us a little bit longer to really put together a good strategy to bring back to the council relative to budgeting. So we are gonna request that the council hold a special budget workshop. And that, um, will be more towards the end of August, not at the regular August eighteenth meeting. So, please just stay tuned for that and I'll keep you apprised as to when that will happen. Work is also continuing, I'm planning for the Sock River Park, and as Tony had requested, we have put that on as an agenda item later on the agenda, so we certainly can talk about that at that point. At the regular MATA board meeting, there were several items related to housing, we've been talking about this a long time. We have now approved the purchase agreement of, uh, one property and signed a purchase agreement, and then we are scheduled to close on another property on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. So, a portion of this funding is coming from MATA's revolving loan fund. However, we do need to have the city authorize a resolution authorizing the transfer funds from the City of Melrose to the Melrose Area Development Authority for land acquisition, which is a separate fund that we have under MATA for, um, these types of projects. So, that's really where we're at with housing at the moment. And we are meeting with a development group next Tuesday. We're also, also meeting with one of our industries that's basically out of room and really needs to expand. We actually have that situation with one industry potentially with another, so that's a really good problem to have in some respects. We just gotta have a place to put them, so that's where we're at. And then we are working with a, um, other company that is interested in potentially coming to Melrose, so. Next door, we hope to have some information available to you at the next meeting. So, that's what I have for now, Mr. Mayor and Council, if anyone should have any questions, it's up for me.
Any questions? All right. We're on the action items. Uh, let's see, the Melrose Arts Council Budget Allowance Sign Ownership. Would like to talk clean, or?
Well, I think, you know, they made it clear what their ask was in their request. As I said, we have done some preliminary kind of just site looking, site line assessment of that area. It's actually sitting up on a hill, so the area itself works well for the sign. It's just the sign itself is pretty large, and so it probably has to get through sort of our planning process, that type of thing. We haven't budgeted, obviously, we're not, um, we're getting to budgeting, but we haven't done anything. So, I guess I would recommend that, um, you give us a little bit more time to kind of discuss it among staff, and then if you would like, I'd be happy to bring forth a recommendation at the August meeting.
If I could ask, and that's, and this one, I know, probably table it or whatever decision we make, but as far as the sign itself goes, is, is, do we have a policy in place for public signage? I mean, public?
So we do, actually.
Because, you know, the, it's, it's pretty black and white, I mean, it's, businesses are handed pretty black and white rules for signage, where it can and can't be. I think the city, we should make sure that we are following our own regulations when we are, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
That we're not encroaching on, you know, any setbacks that businesses have to follow, et cetera, et cetera, so. I just wanna say that.
Yeah, but that's why we're doing our due diligence right now, you know, we've been in touch with the Lake Obegon folks, that's why we've got the county involved, because we really wanna understand where all those setbacks are. And then the sign itself, I will say what they would like to put up, just so it's visible and bigger. Right now, our code, I believe, lets us, if, if it's a city, meaning it's a public purpose type of sign, um, I think it is a hundred? Yeah, they're asking for a little bit bigger than that, just because of the visibility and kinda how it would look. But the sign itself?
Travis can take, take care of that.
Well, actually, the sign itself would comply, the, the actual?
Structure.
Structure is bigger than that. So that's what a hundred and twenty-eight square feet is. The sign, the actual part that is the sign, is gonna fall within that, it's just the stonework on the outside would not. That would make it a little bit bigger. So, that's why I said I'd like to have a little bit more time to kind of look at this.
Right.
And, and we did discuss something similar to this, a time when the billboard blew down and we were looking at potentially doing something like this.
Did we put the billboard back up, though?
We put the billboard back up, yeah.
So that might be part of the discussion also, is what do we do with billboard next time? That has major renovation issues.
Probably different money, that's more MATA money for something like that.
This is money they're raising.
Yeah, right. But we'll, we obviously have to take it over for future.
Yeah, you have to maintain it.
Yeah.
Part of the look, too, is they just, it's for the city and the community, so the stonework and the use in the local masons and whatever is, to have it be a little bit more substantial than just some four-by-four treated posts.
Oh, yeah, no, that's a nice, it's a very nice looking sign.
It's a wonderful looking sign. And then when you look at vinyl and stuff, I mean, that's not a killer in the budget, I would say.
Right.
You know, good people, we know.
Actually, it should be fairly, you know, like you said, fairly big, and it's free, it should be a lot of expenses.
And if you put, you know, I think someone smart like you, that, you know, if you put good stickers on it, lasts a long time. Heels or whatever. So, yeah, I think that's something great, I think, yeah, I think we should table it just 'cause of the budget cycle. Um, I don't know if you guys agree, just table it for now until next month when we know how our budgets are looking. Is that good for everyone?
Yeah.
That's everyone, all right. So, seven A, we will table for probably next month. So, seven B is something that was taken care of already. Resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash forty-one, resolution order of abatement nuisance of, uh, location number thirty-two in Rose Park Southwest, can I get a motion to approve?
Sub move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. To give consideration to order of abatement nuisance of, uh, forty-eight Rose Park Southwest Melrose, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Sub move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution of consideration or the abatement nuisance of one oh-one Rose Park Southwest Melrose.
Sub move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Um, seven F was dealt with and it is resolved. We are on G, which is, uh, resolution considering order of abatement of nuisance conditions at two oh-four Second Street Southwest Melrose, can I get a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Sub move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, resolution, uh, resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash forty-six, um, ordering the abatement nuisance conditions located at five nineteen First Street Southeast, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Sub move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then there's resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash forty-seven approving and transferring the land acquisition funds from the City of Melrose to the Melrose Area Development Authority for the purpose of funding land acquisition to further housing, um, development. Is there any questions?
Yes, for the property that we had approved purchasing at the last meeting?
Yes.
That's with that property, okay. Just wanna make sure we didn't, no?
Yep.
Yeah. Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Sub move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Um, concrete pad at the warehouse, is there anything that needs to be said about that? It's eighteen thousand four hundred and six dollars and sixty-six cents, and that would be, um, on the east side of town, correct?
Yes.
That pad, um, over there, so they can put all the stuff on it, right?
Is this for like sand and?
East substation, right?
Yep. Just bunk for them blocks, is what it is.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Is this shared by utilities and general? Sorry, I was trying to find that, okay.
Yeah, they approved it at the July eleventh meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Sub move. Sub move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Higher part-time, uh, police officer, Stephanie Robach. Everything has its conditions through the, you know, pre-employment physical and drug tests. Uh, if everything goes good, can I get a motion to approve it, step one?
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, around the old business, LCCMR, I'll let you take that.
So, Tony had asked, um, a question about the LCCMR, and he had pulled the legislation or the information off of actually their website. That's a little bit old information I shared with Tony, that we actually have new information from them. One of the concerns was, um, are we in fact getting money to fund the park? And we are. That was part of the enabling resol, uh, resolution that they provided to us. Um, that was in the, that was in the enabling legislation, I should say, not resolution, I apologize. And of course, you asked me that and I'm not gonna be able to find it, but, um, it is on their website. I can clarify that if anyone needs it. I did go through the work plan today with Becca Nash, who is the Director of LCCMR. Um, they are gonna be meeting again on the twenty-fifth, I believe. Um, they have their regular meeting, but we did go through because they had a little bit of confusion. When we started, you are correct, in that that, we were looking at the LCCMR funding to be used for the channel realignment and the habitat restoration. That was what it was gonna be used for. However?
That's what I remember us applying, applying for, he grant for, and that's why I looked this up, was because we, we applied for a grant to fund the river channel, um?
He gave that back.
River channel. No, that was the original, what the RDB.
Yeah.
So then we lowered it to one point one zero five million rather than this four or five ask, in hopes that we would get some funding to help offset the cost of realigning the river channel. So, the, you know, with the LCCMR, I know they do, um, environment and natural resource stuff, or whatever. Habitat, habitat restorations, erosion controls, projects like that. That's why I'm kind of like, well, I can't, I can't hardly believe that they would fund a campground. So, so my concern is, is that I know even if they say we can use it for the campground, we are now taking, effectively taking three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we applied for to go toward the river channel, and we're taking it out of the capital improvement fund, and we're allocating it effectively to the campground now. Because this, this, this grant was applied for to offset the cost of the channel.
So, if I may, um?
Right.
Tony, let you know, kind of continue the, where we were at. So you are correct in that we did apply for the one point one. At the time that we applied, just because of timing and how everything worked, we were proceeding forth with our project regardless. And so our timing was related to when the county was able to get their funding in place for the bridge. So once that all came together, we said, this is a go, we gotta go. They weren't at a point, LCCMR actually didn't do one of their cycles of funding. They couldn't agree on anything, the legislature didn't pass anything. And so, I was like, okay, you know, we have to go, I mean, timing-wise, we're not gonna stop and be delayed two or three years, because it really was incumbent upon us making sure that we- or three years, because it really was incumbent upon us making sure that we had to coincide with what the county was doing from the bridge funding side of it. So, we went ahead and we bid that project in November. And, you know, we're proceeding along with that project. And I'm going to be very honest with you, you know, the way the legislature went this year, I got a call from Becca Nash saying, okay, so, you know, we're putting this in there. Are you guys still interested? And I said to her, I said, you know, in all good consciousness, we've already started this project. We can't, you know, we started this. There's not, you guys don't go back and fund things. It has to be forward. And so, I said, I don't really know if we have a project here. And then, in working with her and working with our local legislators especially, she's like, you know, we really want to see Melrose. You guys have been through a lot with this. We, you know, we really want to work with you to get a project. And they have done campgrounds as part of this. There's certain stipulations with campgrounds that you have to have. There's also interpretive signage, and there's, you know, the habitat is part of it. So, I think why we ended up getting the funding for the campgrounds is because they looked at it as part of a larger project. It's just that the channel realignment and the habitat restoration are now coming from a different source of funding, which is, you know, we move forward with that project. And so, yes, the campground is part of this. I can, and I will, I promise you, they, I just submitted this, the reiteration of that work plan, based on their staff giving me the language that they want, they wanted to see in there. So, I will make sure I get that to you. But it is there. So, I do understand what you're saying, but it was a timing issue. So, even if we were to get funding today, we would not be able to use it for the channel realignment, because it's done.
But the channel realignment happened during the funding process of the state. I don't know what the dates on this was as far as when the project had happened or not, but, you know, obviously, we haven't paid for the, maybe we have paid for the river channel already, but anyway-
We have.
The, the grant request was to help offset that expense. I mean, that's why we applied for originally.
Yep. And again, I think that-
So, whether or not they would still fund it, even though we are working actively on the project, that's, you know, I, what bothers me about this is that it was never brought up that this was the river channel funding. We never discussed that, like, that was never talked about here, you know, you know what I mean?
We did actually say that we received the LCCMR funding.
Yeah, for the campground, but we, the, the application is for the river channel.
If you recall, and I think it was probably three months ago when we first talked about this, or maybe even four, we did talk about the fact that we did have to significantly revise that work plan. So, I think, and I apologize if that was not clear to the council as far as what we were doing. So, I certainly understand where you're coming from. However, I do, I can assure you that the money is there for the campground. So-
I, I guess you informed me on it, and I think the Parks Board knew about it. I, it happened as I thought it was, you know, as you said, because I knew that, we talked, and I remember talking to Senator Westrom a couple of times, even at the State Capitol when we were down there, and that was that Friday where they were, well, that Thursday or Wednesday when we were down there, and then they voted on it that Friday. And that's-
So, when we actually got the language, Tony, actually, it, I'm not going to, it kind of took-
Well, Westrom took it, you know, I didn't know that we were still in it. We didn't, we didn't know that we got it till that week, that they actually put it in there.
Yeah.
They contemplated it back and forth, but that week, when I was at the Capitol with the sixth graders with your wife, that's when he came up to me and talked to me. I'm like, that's in there. And that's when I called you quick and she-
And to our surprise, because I didn't think the legislature did anything, and it turned out they did. And the language that was in there was, you know, it was really driven by, you know, thankfully, by our local legislators.
Right. But my concern is still that it was applied for, for the capital improvement of the expense of the river channel. That's what, what it, we applied for. Somebody made the decision to say, hey, now we're going to go for, you know, pushing us toward the campground. And whether or not, and I don't know, maybe, maybe, maybe they're saying we can't use that for the river channel anymore.
I believe there was a resolution-
I mean, I'll look for the updated language on this, just to see whether or not we can, but the old one is specifically just for the river channel. I mean, everything about it is river channel. It's flowbank benches in the river channel. It's, or fish banks, whatever they call them, fish, whatever. The native vegetation, the, you know, erosion control stuff. There's nothing about campground in the original application that was allocated according to this wording in this document. So-
But we didn't even get that approved.
Right.
We didn't get that application approved ever.
No.
Well, it's, it's approved. It's approved on their website.
Once they changed it up.
Yeah.
But it's approved according to this wording on their website, right now.
On the old one.
Yes, the old one is approved. It's 350,000, the old one. So, I'm assuming that this, under, on their own website, we should be able to use that money toward the river channel, if that makes sense. I mean, it's, does allocate 350,000. So, anyway, my concern is not necessarily whether or not they say, yes, you can use it for campground or not. It's, we are now making, we're now making, have to make a decision if we want to take 350,000 dollars or spend an additional 350,000 dollars on the river channel, because according to this grant, we should get this money. And that 350,000 could stay in our capital improvement fund, which, by the way, there is nothing about the campground in our capital improvement plan, five or 10-year plan. So, the projects in our capital improvement plan should be able to keep all that money in there, because I have a feeling our projects are going to get a lot more expensive with inflation or environment, right?
Let me just go-
Anyway, I don't know if that all makes sense, but it's, it's a little, it's, it's a little, I don't know, a little disturbing. And I don't know, Scott, if, if you have anything to throw in there, but when we apply for a grant from LCCMR and-
Following, it sounds like this is implied, but the project started before the application was entered. And at that point, whatever the project cost was, it went forward in the months for that project. Whoever the council decided they were going to pay for it, the channel, or that, that whole city's part of the project down there. The city's coming up with the money, and it doesn't include this, because the legislature didn't have, and the city had to look forward to the project with waiting. Ultimately, they get approved funds. I guess the question was, what are those funds for? And it's probably not so much, it just like wasn't in our application, but what did this one location, LCCMR, and ultimately, the legislature. And that's like, we got to look at what was passed this last spring. And the person that we applied for, this 20-foot bridge management, you know, that had been created, one of those that, so wherever you guys found the money, it did include this.
Yeah. And on that note, I can't remember where we pulled the money from, but obviously, it got pulled from somewhere, because we didn't have it fully funded, I don't think, the river channel fully funded from day one. So, I don't know if there's something that needs to be funded again or not. I can't remember. I'd have to look back and see what-
Assuming that you got money allocated to bid bills for this project, and it doesn't, it doesn't include allocating the money, because it wasn't available.
Right.
And so, now the money's popping up, and we, you know, we know what we applied for. The question is, what did they approve? And-
And you've been working with her on this, too, anyways.
So, I have it right here. I can say.
Could look different than what we applied for.
Yep.
Yeah. It should probably follow the legislature, which should be surprised.
And, and that's just it, you know, we're plans with the LCCMR change all the time. There's an expectation that that could happen, because it could be a two-year cycle before they actually fund some of these things. So, the, it was to conduct habitat restoration and create fishing, canoeing, and camping opportunities along a segment of the Sauk River within the city of Melrose, provide education about habitat and environment. So, that is the ENRTF funding would allow campsites to be replaced and additional recreational amenities added to allow people to enjoy newly restored channel, including recreational facilities, that allow people to enjoy the new river setting through camping, fishing, non-motorized boating, and, and, yeah, I said fishing twice. So, there's educational signage, too.
Okay. I would look into it, but I don't want to jeopardize losing 350,000, $350,000, okay?
Could we just, when, when we get the contract language, if, because there's probably going to be a contract with that.
Oh, for sure.
Could we get that forwarded?
Yep. That actually will get approved by you folks. In fact, I will get you all, I will get you the true, the, I could even pull the statute that it came from.
I just don't want to, I mean, if we ever want to apply for a grant again, and we misuse the funds, we're probably not going to get another grant.
So, it would be, it would be wholly irresponsible, and that's why, in good consciousness, we did everything we could to make sure we were having those very, those communications. That's why I told you, Tony, originally, because it was a 1.1 million, and I thought, gosh, you know, I don't know if we have a project here. And, and, you know, working with the state and with our local legislators, they said, yes, Melrose has a project, and we want to work with you. So, that's where we're at. So, I, I, I see where you're coming from, but I can assure you from a staffing level that we would not, we would not, the appropriate, that's why the appropriate, from my own standpoint, has to be there as well.
And your paperwork is in black and white. That comes right from them.
Yeah. River habitat restoration, recreation.
I'm not worried about it. But, yeah, we can see it. So, all right. Nine, the staff will be working on a budget. As a reminder, it'll be 4:30 August 18th.
Actually, we're going to be changing that, Mr. Mayor. I just had mentioned that. So, we are probably looking at August 29th or 30th. We'll get some dates to you. But the budget workshop will be separate from the August 18th regular meeting, because, again, we need a little bit more time to put some stuff together.
Okay.
I don't know yet. I have to look.
All right. If not, the information items, as utility commission meeting minutes, a second quarter ambulance report. Unless there's anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.